We'll get started with roll call. Present. Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Summers.
Present.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
Present.
Ms. Mayor Marlin, sorry.
Here.
Mary Oswell.
Here.
Diana Michaels.
Present.
Mayor Fine will be a little bit late. Melissa Beck here. Patrick and Katrina will not be able to it. Thank you.
I'm always the first on roll call, so I'm ready to go always. All right. We have approval of our agenda for the day.
So move, Michael.
All right. If all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I don't believe we have any audience participation, so we'll move on to the minutes. Is there a motion, or should I ask, is there any corrections or additions? All right, if not, is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
We'll take care of it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I should carry. All right, consolidated reports. Ryan, we have those in front of us, correct?
Yes. So, not much of a verbal today, this is just informational. And I was due to determine when information went out. The July financials weren't closing until the 12th, so there's a little bit of a press this go around. I attributed to Lori to getting me the statements out very quickly. Especially the roll forward a lot of these interesting things that had to take place related to the fiscal year closest on the greens to make sure this all ties out. So, anyway. So, all the funds relatively the same as last month. As always, you've got your ICERT workforce that are always, you know, running a mile behind in the lag there for recovery of funding. ICERT, the reason why we've got almost $600,000 deficit this go around, it relates to both the June and or July reimbursement. June got processed by the first week of July for the cash receipts, so it's just, or sorry, first week of August. So it's just a bit of a timing issue there. Otherwise, it's valid for the statements.
Are there any questions for Ryan? If not, I'll let you go ahead and jump into the list of bills.
If anyone's got any questions on that, let me know, there was no activity to fund 474 or 475. There's nothing matters in our usual report on them, so if you've got any questions, just let me know and I can answer.
Is there a motion to accept and place on file the list of bills?
So move.
Second.
Second?
Second.
If there's no questions or discussion, all in favor? Opposed? All right. We have an action item, and that's our FY25 budget proposal, and I'll turn that over to Ryan and Tammy.
Everyone's had their coffee this morning?
Probably. Yeah, but that's okay.
So, going to go ahead and present to you this year's fiscal year 25 budget. Keep in mind that as we were throwing this together, it was based on most readily available data. I tried to capture it all the way through the end of July, so there might be some possibilities that will bring to you later down the road. And then there's also, this builds in, the adjustments to salary compensation that just later discussed and brought up in November meeting. Brought to you separately from the roll. Yeah, first line there. So, first going to cover agency as a whole. We're sitting at approximately 305 staff. We hope to remain steady for next year. Obviously, it depends on the level of funding and ensuring that the funding continues to remain in place. Agency accommodates seven different funds, over 157 grants and nine programs. If you're to pick out inter-fund transfers and one-off activity, we have about 90% of our budget is made up of all federal and state grants. And then, one thing I'd always like to highlight is administrative costs. We're continuing to budget, and it's projected that it's going to stay less than 7% of the agency budget. This allows us to remain excited when it comes to going out and submitting for grants, as most of those have a cap of 15 to 20% of the grant budget. So, and then, one other note real quick, is you're seeing the revenue and expenditures at the top right corner. The FY25 is the budget, the 2024, though, that is the revised budget that is out there in Munich right now, at the end of July, or the time of when this presentation got thrown together. So if you're wondering why that, on the 2024, the $67 million amount's not matching to the binder, it's because this was the original budget that was submitted for 2024, where this is, again, you know, what's been brought to you based on any sort of budget amendments that have taken place throughout 2024 so far, including that $4 million indirect slash fringe budget amendment I brought to you for inter-fund activity earlier in the year. Within Fund 075 to 075, we've got approximately 97 staff. Budget is anticipated to go up compared to last year's original budget, almost $10 million bucks. About 4.3 million of that's indirect and fringe. The other piece is anticipation of a new facility or relocation of RPC. And how things play out with the county offices relocating the Bennett Center. Within the fund, it includes initiatives for emergency rental assistance, planning, developmental disabilities and social services, implementation of energy efficiency strategies. The fund's also utilized for tracking of administrative cost and the overhead. And we've also, I didn't really mention it there, but we've also got a data and tech department that's split off from the planning and community development from previous years. So, decline in fund balance in projected 2024 is attributed to a one-time stimulus recovery funding for either basically our ERA funding. We're expecting to fully exhaust that, and that was funding that was received during COVID, and at this point, it's completely exhausted, and yeah, I can have that going forward. Staffing levels expected to remain proportionate to the grant funding. And then the increase, again, kind of like I believe it's already for 2025 reflects additional budget for revenue expenditures. It'll be inter-fund transfers that are taking place, so that way we're properly reflecting our indirect and fringe to, it's a matching principle across our grants, is all it is. Again, that's not additional revenue we're going to be receiving, it's just inter-fund activity. And then, you know, the relocation of the county to the Bennett Center is going to require us to look into evaluating whether we should take here or have to get a new facility somewhere. And as I'm going along here, too, I mean, you don't have to wait to the end with questions, if you'd like to stop at any point in time, ask questions. So, next one, Police Training Fund. This one, it was, 2024 was its first full year as its own fund. Again, that was because our external auditors recommended that, because they have to have a separate audit, external audit for the police training grant, it was recommended that it gets split off as its own separate fund for ease of auditing, which really all came down to. So we went ahead and did that. 2024 budget compared to 2025 relatively stayed, at the end of the day, there's no significant changes in activity with the police training program. 2024 slightly higher, just simply due to the fact that we were still having to do some transfers to move out activities from Fund 2075 to 060. Early childhood, projected staffing is at 157 staff. Budget expected to remain compared to 2024's. There really hasn't been any changes in 2024 as far as revisions to the total budget for the year. Programming utilizes multiple federal and state revenue streams to provide comprehensive daycare and development services to over 511 children in families. Includes enhanced center-based learning platforms for needs of at-risk infants and preschoolers. The continued funding and persisting debt first. Again, there's no significant changes or notable highlights to make from the 2024 to 2025 budget for the early childhood. And then, I know Randy continues to talk about this when we have these monthly meetings, is, you know, continuing to make sure that we're increasing our level of enrollment and just primarily focused around the recovery from the COVID post-pandemic. Fund 109, so last, last year was its first full year. This was the fund that had came over, this program that came over from the university, was brought on. Majority of its funding is through DCEO. Included within the funding is the Iowa commitment to provide a required special identity training for newly hired community action agency and county government legalization. Budget also includes funding for the relocation of the ICERT program to a larger facility. This had been budgeted in 2024 as well, which is why it's only speaking $19 million roughly in 2024. Much of that funding would roll forward into the DCEO, IGA for fiscal year July 1st of this year through June 30th of next year. And we're anticipating using a majority of that funding associated with the cost and build out the facility next year, so. Which is why it's still a pretty significant as far as the budget goes for next year. Deficit in fund balance, just due to timing and reimbursements, and yeah, you see that in the monthly financials that we provide every single month. Miola, projected to have approximately 32 staff. Budget has increased from 2024. They do have about a $600,000 increase within their funding from the formula grants for this coming fiscal grant year. I know Justin's also been very busy with working on a few additional supplemental fund, or additional funding sources related to working with Parkland and the university as well that has been accomplished in this. And then they've also supplemental funding for apprenticeship program, hoping to strengthen the public workforce system responsive to probably the sector needs for reselling and upskilling workforce. And again, similar to Fund 109, just operating on a reimbursement basis, so you're always going to see a bit of a lag, and hence, like, fund balance is showing a deficit there. But we anticipate to recover that by the end of the grant close, so.
All right.
The F-32 FTE, is that including workforce experience?
That's not actual staff, it includes youth work experience, so probably 20 or so of those FTEs are not my staff.
18.67. On the chart, it says 18.67, our words.
Moving on to Fund 474 USDA loan fund. Not a lot of anticipated activity in this fund for the coming fiscal year. Staff do continue to evaluate, continue to document, or it's on a case-by-case basis where when the clients come looking for funding, all sources of funding are reviewed, including USDA. Just last few years, USDA hasn't been needed, so. Again, not that it's not available, it's just they've got other sources of funding to provide it right now.
Have a question on that here. What is the definition of a rule that we're utilizing for this fund? Is it the USDA standard, or is it what the NPO uses for rule versus the planned area?
USDA.
Okay.
Population less than 25,000.
We did have a moment originally associated with the funding source, so yeah, there was a loan taken out with USDA, and got to follow their guidelines for.
And we're utilizing USDA interest rates, that's not something that's set by RPC?
No, I think it's like 1%.
Yeah, it's 1% of the outstanding loan balance. And then we've got Fund 475. This fund's used to accommodate restricted revolving loan portfolio with proportionate job creation or retention requirements. Funding for fiscal year 25 has been allocated for the acquisition of a new facility to facilitate the potential relocation of RPC pending county's move to Bennett Center. Then at the time of the presentation here, when I was throwing all this together, I want to highlight that while the fund is significant, said approximately 4.2 million, 3.7 million of that is currently restricted with loans that are already outstanding, or CDC loans that are outstanding. So it's not like we've got, we don't have 4.2 million of cash, is what I want to make clear to everyone, you know, sitting in this fund, is it's already being used for a purpose within Fund 475 for economic development, and yeah, that we only really have about $450,000 sitting out there, so. And our hope is that as we continue to collect on the outstanding loans that are outstanding right now, we'll be able to use that funding in fiscal year 25 for, again, you know, potentially a new facility, so. That's it for that. The only other thing I do want to note is I always like to thank everyone for their local contributions to RPC. So I want to highlight, for the loss, we had contributions from Champagne County, City of Champagne, City of Urbana, Mountain to approximately $37,000. Village of Sabley, $6,500, and University of Illinois, $19,000. And we also have membership dues, Champagne County, Mountain, between $1,000, City of Champagne, $60,000, City of Urbana, $27,000, Village of Ranthool, $9,000, Village of Sabley, $7,000, Village of Mohammed, $7,000, and St. Joseph, approximately $4,000. Police training contributions remain the same across all municipalities there, and that's appreciated. And then we've also got the Youth Assessments Center, where Champagne County contributes 5% of public safety sales tax. And so that's projected to be around $344,000 for fiscal year 25, and then we also have a contribution from City of Champagne, an amount of $15,000 for the Youth Assessments Center. Yeah, thank you for all of that as well.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or anything?
I was wondering if you could speak a little bit to, under the grants and contracts, there is about $5.5 million for rental assistance, is that ARPA funding?
Where are you seeing that in the binder here?
Page 11.
So, on the grants contract page here, these are the grants and what the original awarded amounts were. It doesn't imply that those are the current amounts that are available for spending. So like, when you're seeing the apartment number 880 rental assistance, there is approximately $5.5 million awarded related to that grant funding. As of right now, there's only about $1.3 million outstanding associated with it. And then that, all of that's anticipated to be spent out through the rest of fiscal year 24 here. So that actually go away, start a next calendar year.
Were those COVID relief funds?
It's COVID relief funds is what it was, yep.
And then if you could expand on what the ARPA sleep program is?
The. I was going to say, I can better at Lisa here.
Champagne County provided us ARPA funding to do a sleep initiative in three primary areas, Pleasant Acres and Ranthool, Davin Downs in Champagne, and then Scottsville here in Urbana. Primarily safety lighting, doing some upgrades to outdoor lighting to increase safety in the areas.
Thank you.
The other thing I'll just highlight also with the rent assistance that Ryan just, that you just asked about. 75% of those funds over this long pandemic were directly for rent assistance. The remaining funds, I think I talked about it previously, we're looking, and we have underway two projects that we're working to support affordable housing development, so it has longer lasting impact.
One in Urbana and one in Champagne.
Yes.
Is there any other questions?
Is the work in Scottsville, what's the status of that? Is it in design, is it in planning, is it underway?
Households have expressed interest, they have completed paperwork, and just this week, they're starting to get out and do the direct assessment and get contractors underway. So no work yet has been completed, but it's in the process.
So this isn't to install streetlights, it's to put.
Correct.
On the homes?
Civil home.
House lights, okay.
So possibly yard lights, if they have outdoor, yeah, and ring doorbells.
Ring doorbells, okay.
Similar to the program that was issued Champagne did in garden.
Okay, if there's no other questions, is there a motion to accept and place on file?
Second.
Want a clarification as to accept and place on file, or is it to approve?
I have to place it on file, will we approve the budget later?
Oh, that's my.
Yeah. Is it like November?
Tended to study session, Christopher.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Let's see, where are we at here? Okay, next item is the approval of the BUA 2024. Tammy, is that your?
Good morning. We are requesting this morning approval of a $2.5 million budget amendment, and that is to facilitate a couple of transactions related to our Head Start facilities. So RPC leases two of its facilities from Illinois Community Action Development Corporation, ICADC. And then ICADC uses the rent payments to service the loans. And the benefits of this arrangement for RPC is that ICADC is a not-for-profit organization, so the cost of property taxes is not passed on to our program. And also, once the facilities are paid off, then we are able to capture the reduced rent as an in-kind contribution, which is a program requirement. So at present, the Urbana facility has an outstanding loan. This is a facilities loan with RPC, and it's a balance of a little over $1 million. The West Champagne location has two outstanding loans. One is a bank loan of about, outstanding balance of about $1.4 million, and the other is a CDAF loan. I think the balance of that's $1.9 million.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. So, we've been notified by ICADC that the bank note is callable in October, and the interest rate is going to increase from 4.5% to 7.5% or 8%. So, and those costs through the lease agreement that RPC has with ICADC will be passed on to the program, and we estimate that's about a $34,000 increase in annual program costs. So, we have two recommendations. The first is that we would use unrestricted Head Start funds that have no federal identity, they've been earned by the program, to facilitate the payment of the bank loan in full, and that would circumvent the increase in interest rate and those costs being passed on to the program. Also, if we are able to keep the rent payments at the same level even after that loan is paid off, that would allow the other loan, the CDAF loan, to be paid off quicker, and then we would be able to capture the in-kind contribution sooner for that facility. The second recommendation would be to use unrestricted Head Start funds to pay off the Urbana loan in full, and this would, of course, result in significantly reduced rent costs, also allow the in-kind contribution to be captured and applied for the program. And this would also free up facilities funds for the Regional Planning Commission to be used towards the purchase of a new facility, which is what Orion presented in the 2475 fund, where the $1.6 million would come from. So in order to facilitate these two transactions, we would need approval of the budget amendment 2024-08-145.
So is there any question? Okay.
I just thought of this, on the facility in Champagne, I think the other thing, it's key with the federal government that we lease these facilities at below market rate. And so if the interest rate goes up, our rental costs will also go up, and that could tip us over whatever, you know, what the market rate is, and that could be problematic for us to deal with the federal government.
Got a question. I'm all about paying off loans and taking care of debt, and I understand that we want to remain program compliant with our rent. What, but for this increase or callability, what would we have used those funds for?
At present, they're just in the fund balance.
Okay, so it's fund balance, it's not like we're going to not do something because of it, or we're going to have to delay the implementation of something else because of this?
Correct.
Okay.
Also, one thing I didn't mention is that in servicing, well, the loan percentage rates are 2.5%, which I know is very nominal for the RPC loans, but those interest costs with the payoff of the facility loan would no longer be incurred by the program either.
Tammy?
What's the maturity date of that callable?
October.
I know, but that, you said it's callable in October, but that's not the maturity date of the loan, what was the original maturity date of the loan, approximately?
It's 2042.
Oh, so it's way out there.
2042 for the Shem, Urbana one, and 2044 for the West Champagne.
Was that like a three or a five-year adjustable, or was it?
Five years.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, then, I guess we're looking for approval.
So move. Second, Summers.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Going down to Lissy, Lisa, you have a request for demographic information?
Yes. In your packet, at the very back, there is a sheet, as part of grant monitoring, monitoring each year, the RPC has to submit equal opportunity of earned good action information. One of the aspects of this is populating a spreadsheet with demographic information from the, specific to our clients, our staff, and then also our board members. So to most accurately reflect each board member's information, we're asking that you please complete this form, and then when you're done at the end of the meeting, just fold it in half, and there's an envelope in the back that you could set it in there. So it's not identifying information, but we want to make sure that we're collecting your self-determined information.
Does anybody have any questions for Lisa? Seems pretty basic, looks pretty simple, like I can figure it out. So, all right.
Know about yourself.
I don't know, there might be one or two there, it might be questionable. So, all right, we are with our program updates, and we'll start out back to Ryan. So you do get to talk all morning.
Do you need to throw lozens? Do you need to throw lozens?
Yes. It's gonna sound probably like a little bit of a broken record from last month, but I mean, as far as for fiscal, it's a lot of the same stuff. So we do have the IDHS audit that's still continuing to go on. Had a call with them yesterday morning, that lasted about a whole morning. Going through, working through detail with them, they're evaluating our fiscal policies, RPC's personnel policies, and then they're also looking at the detail for both the rent rehousing and the homeless prevention grants they selected for this year. So that's been a lot of fun. And then continuing to work on the Champagne County audit. Again, hoping to have a draft to them here by the end of this month so they can try to get things out the door here. And we've got to have everything filed to the state by the end of September in order to make sure there's no issues with restricted funding sources or anything. Oh, update, it's been a while because it's been a bit of a slow-moving change that's been going on. So probably six months ago or so, I was telling everyone we're continuing to work on revising the monthly financial statements. We've got the SSRS seat service reporting that's within Munis. Basically, it generates QAN reports that we've been working on getting developed. And then as part of this addition of the inter-fund activity, being able to track that out, we're finally moving a step closer on that. There's been an SSRS report that's been built out, specific to be able to track basically the chart of accounts within the project module. And the project module is separate than the general ledger detail that the county uses for each chart of accounts. So the biggest trick has been able to say, hey, we've got two separate charts of accounts, one for reporting to the state, one for reporting to county, and how do we ensure that we're reconciling between the two of them? So a report that just got built out, it now allows for us to basically run the seat entire chart of accounts for our project side of things. I can link that now to the indirect in the fringe and we ran a successful inquiry of that here on Monday. So my hope is to get all the indirect fringe related to all operating activity that's happened this year posted in those monthly financials for each individual brand. Sorry, it's just a small little exciting thing for me. I'm excited to finally get that built out to make the internal processing move a lot smoother and one of the difficulties we always have is when we switch over from MS400 to Munis on the county side, Munis made it a lot more difficult to be able to get the reports closed out and posted on time. You used to be able to do it on the fifth of every single month back in the old system and now it's the tenth. And so to go from having now a five-day lag on the county side and then we're saying, hey, we've got to run with these reports that we receive on the tenth and immediately get them turned around and closed out and submitted to everyone else, it's been very difficult. So I'm hoping to build out of these internal courses, we're moving closer on that, it should be able to cut, you know, three, four days off of the actual development of the reports themselves that were submitted out to everyone. So so that way we can ensure that we get these reports to you guys on a monthly basis as well too.
Thank you. Becky.
Good morning. I'm gonna probably sound like a broken record too, but there are a couple of exciting reports today. Today in your packet, the personnel transactions reports representing new hires, transfers, and exits are from July 14, 2024 to August 10, 2024. Orion, my headcount numbers may be a little different than yours because I checked it like last night at 10 o'clock, so but it could change. So RPC currently has 310 active employees, which includes 41 work experience participants. The HR department has been focused on several staffing strategies and we are currently, we currently have 11 candidates in the system. We have hired five people since the last time we met last month. So we have 15 vacancies with Head Start, we're getting there. Our goal is to report single digits and it's coming, so we gotta just hold tight a little longer. We have three positions with workforce development, you know, these are related to program expansion, administrative position with community services and a transportation engineer with planning and community development. Our turnover trends are still in a good place, particularly for this time of year. As of August, our turnover rate is 10% and we are still on track to reduce turnover from last year significantly. The HR team has been working on developing a presentation which will be presented next week for the early childhood division and that presentation is focused on relationship building and civility. So we're excited about that training opportunity. And then the most exciting part of this report is tomorrow, August 24, the social committee here at RPC is hosting a family picnic in Potluck at Hassel Park from 4:00 PM to 7:00, so cover dishes, desserts, family and friends. And if y'all need to go get a little sweat off your back and a little bit of snacks tomorrow night, please feel free to stop by, we'd love to see you. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Becky? All right, thank you. Randy, with Head Start's not here, those that aren't here, all all of their updates are in your packet. Lisa.
Good morning. Community services, lots of community-based services that we provide, a lot of financial assistance and the the need in the community is not decreasing. Particularly at the end of our fiscal year, for most of our grants ending in June, we saw two programs that were probably, well, they were pretty much at the end of their funding. We're happy that through Champagne County ARPA money, we were able to not have any breaks in service. So through Champagne County ARPA money, the rent assistance funding that we have for temporary assistance, they provided a bridge and some additional funds, $15,000 that were allowed us to get to our next grant that began on July 1st. So with that, we were able to assist additional 11 households that would not have been able to be assisted. Additionally, our LIHEAP program threw lots of creativity. Officially, we probably would have had to stop services in probably around April as our funding would have been exhausted. Officially, this year, the program had been extended to end in August, where it usually ends in May, dependent upon funding. Again, the creativity part was being able to do some budget modifications and move additional funds into client assistance. That allowed us to continue to serve almost till the end of May. And then with, again, Champagne County ARPA funds and then also community services block grant funding that we were able to do a modification. Yes, Aliso.
I just want to emphasize that the program funds that she's referring to are funds that were earned by the Regional Planning Commission through the LIHEAP program. So those funds could have been used to, those funds are typically used to support the organization, either personnel, everything else that it takes for us to to operate the program. And so we converted those funds into client benefit funds so we could serve additional families and it was.
I don't have the exact number, but it was significant. We did probably at least four modifications because we keep doing projections to see could we move more money and keep serving. With the Champagne County funds and then also the CSBG modification funds, we were able to continue to provide services till the end of July. I think we may even had a couple of benefits even the very first of August and assisted approximately 373 additional households. In July, we received new funding from the Champagne County Developmental Disabilities Board. It's a new service that's going to expand services for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. It's referred to as the Community Life Short-Term Assistance Program. This service will provide financial assistance ranging from $100 up to $3,000 to adults residing in Champagne County to facilitate community engagement, foster social interactions and friendships, promote independence and educational opportunities, enables visits to friends and families outside the immediate area and acquire technological devices or equipment to enhance leisure, social, and entrepreneurial activities. This is something that the Developmental Disabilities Board has been focused on and so they had a special fund that we submitted a proposal and they approved that. So we're going to be able to provide this additional assistance to persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities here in Champagne County. And then the last thing that I want to highlight, in the fall of 2024, the regulated utility companies, particularly here in Champagne County, Amarin and Nipor, will launch low-income discount rates. The assistance was created through the Climate and Equitable Jobs Act, CEJA, a lot of people have been hearing about CEJA, to mitigate and adapt to climate change. The ICC, the Illinois Commerce Commission oversees the provision of adequate, reliable, efficient, and safe utility services at the least possible cost to Illinois citizens, served by electric, natural gas, telecommunications, water, so on and so forth. So on, in November of 2023, the ICC has ordered the national gas providers to issue these low-income discount rates. What that's gonna mean is that Nipor and Amarin here in our area will offer tiered discount rates. The tiers will provide different discounts depending on the tier. And one highlight, the most significant, those in the lowest tier will receive 75% discounts to their total gas charges. So this will go effect October 1st. All of our LIHEAP clients that have been served in this fiscal year, FY24, they will automatically be enrolled into these low-income discount rates. So the state has worked closely with utilities to provide a mechanism to get the account information to Amarin and Nipor, so they will automatically begin to apply these low-income discount rates to those that have received LIHEAP here in this past programming year. Been a lot of work that's gone into this, there's a lot of change that's happening, particularly with our LIHEAP program. The most important and biggest takeaway that we believe is to encourage folks to always and continue to apply for LIHEAP because there's a mechanism for them to continue to receive these low-income discount rates by keeping their LIHEAP status up to date. I'm sure there'll be more information that we'll share as as the program rolls out, but I did want to share that. Again, it is right now just for gas charges, but we anticipate, I'll look at Aliso for when, but electric will come in the future also.
Just for my own edification, where in the county does Nipor operate? So I thought we were all Illinois, or Amarin, excuse me.
Small, there's a small population in Ranool area, the northern part.
So it's the northern part, okay, thank you.
Do you know how many unique households are served by LIHEAP on a regular, on a continuing basis?
We have that. I don't want to throw out the wrong number, so I can get that for you. And I say we have that because we worked really closely with our data and technology group to have a platform to be able to pull that specific number. And so we have all of our LIHEAP clients in our Sierra database, so we'll be able to deduplicate and say how many individual households.
And LIHEAP is a recurring support, monthly report?
It is.
And is there?
No, sorry, I apologize. Each year, people can qualify for benefits, so it's not a monthly, it's with LIHEAP, they come in and they go through a an intake and then their specific benefit amount based on the individualized household situation, they get that benefit applied to their account.
However, there is.
There is the Percentage Income Payment Program, PIP, we refer to it as PIP. And that is, it's a lower number of households, it's fully state-funded and they receive a recurring monthly benefit that also reduces their outstanding balance on their account, I think by 10%. That program, particularly with low-income discount rates, a lot to, that will change probably in the upcoming year with regard to how relevant it may be with those households that may qualify for very deep 75% decreases.
And the premise behind PIP and the low-income discount rates, as Lisa pointed out, is that, you know, ordinary households spend less than 6% of their total income towards utilities, while families that we serve through the LIHEAP program may spend over 30%, if not more, of their income towards utilities. And so when you are on limited and sometimes fixed income, that's pretty significant. And so the goal is to try and get those households to only be spending less than 6%, maybe even 4% of their income towards utilities.
Lisa, is there a cap on this program or is it, is it more fluid?
With the low-income discount?
Yes.
Again, well, so the income generated or revenue generated for the program, actually all of us and every single person that pays a utility bill, if you look at your bill, you'll see that we're assessed, I think it's 48 cents, and that is what generates the funds to support the discount rates. So I can't speak to a cap or anything to that. Again, it's it's the funds that is fully administered by the utilities. The funds go to the utilities through our bills and then they apply the discount rates.
Good, good.
Is there, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is the discount just for the actual gas or is it for the total amount?
The total related to gas charges.
So even the delivery? Thank you.
I just had a quick question. I know for some rural residents and things, electricity there, they could probably go through LIHEAP. Is there anything for those that are on propane, because that's different than gas?
LIHEAP also does provide a benefit related to propane.
Because I didn't know if propane had like a utility tax or something too that helped provide that kind of savings for those people.
So there's benefit, the other thing I'll just highlight, there's benefit matrices that are applied with LIHEAP, you know, going back to Diane's question about what the benefit is. There's matrices specific to each household and where they fall in in income and number of people and then the utility. So it is more complicated in this upcoming year because the state's working to create some equity because there will be, you know, households that don't have Nipor or Amarin. And so the benefit matrices will be a little bit, say, more for the LIHEAP benefit versus someone that maybe had Amarin or Nipor that will have these low-income discounts. I say that specifically with Ranool, Village of Ranool and the utility.
Yeah.
Yes, to your question, the utilities that serve rural communities, that the rural electric co-ops are not regulate, well, they're not mandated to participate in these low-income discount rates. Now, they could voluntarily do so, but as of now, they're they're not required to participate. And so those households will probably continue to be served by the LIHEAP program, but they will not receive the low-income discount rates.
So we just kind of depend on each client then, sorry.
Okay.
So still encourage them to apply and see what they have, so. All right, very good, thank you. Anyone else have questions for Lisa? All right, Justin.
I said, I said last time, you know, I'm taking this. I said last time that I was gonna try and bring some information today about our application window. That every year during the summer, we have a window for people to apply for low-income or skills deficient or workforce development training. And that's in anticipation of going to school in the fall. And so that process happened, we have the application window, we got applicants and people started school. And I said I wanted to give you all some information about it. I'm passing around a sheet right now that has to do with a second topic, a business team. But the first topic is the application window data. We have four career coaches for a five-county area. We have two career coaches in Champagne and we have one that serves Ford in Iroquois. And we have one that serves Ford and Iroquois and one that serves Pi and Douglas. Represented here basically is their caseload. And on their caseload is new people who are starting training, people who were in training that have carried over into this program year. What's not represented in some of these numbers I'm going to share with you is any youth that are in a learning experience, any people now in training receiving career services and community resources and other supports, and then anyone receiving on-the-job training in a business. So we're only talking, what I'm about to share is people who are applying to get resources to go to school in the fall. So we had 173 people apply. Eighty-eight new folks were assigned to career coaches. This is, I can email this out, I got this, anyway, I can email this out. I'm just going to read off of it, I see people looking for it. You don't have it, but I'll get it to you. My apologies. Out of 173 applicants, 88 moved forward to going to school. Usually when people don't move forward, it's because they're really not ready, they haven't kind of thought it through, they're really not sure about where they want to go or through a discussion to decide, maybe I just need to go into employment. So that's kind of typically what happens. Out of those 88 folks, 60% were on SNAP. 82% qualified as basic skills deficient, meaning they couldn't pass a ninth-grade comprehension in math test. 12% were, or they didn't have a GED or high school equivalency. 12% were a dislocated worker that had been laid off. 16% were youth, 2% were veteran. Out of the 82, a little over 50 participants were, or new clients were black. A little over 20 were white. Under five were Hispanic and under five preferred not to answer. Eighty-six of the, percent of these folks came from Champaign County. Douglas and Iroquois, 6%, Ford and Pi, 1% of those 88. 37% are going for an associate's, 63% are going for a certificate. Out of those trainings, the breakdown of industry is 32 in healthcare, three in ag tech, seven in business, 28 in TDL, four manufacturing, three in construction, two in law, three in education. Our region has target sectors of logistics, manufacturing, healthcare, business services. So it seemed like we were going in that direction. For us, this is a good indication that people are going towards good quality jobs rather than kind of dead-end jobs. They're going into leading and emerging industries. In addition to those 88, 52 customers continued with training. So maybe there was 100 customers that had completed training. These 52 were completed yet. And so in our application window, we have to take that into account because that determines how much funds we're going to use for the rest of the year. Out of those 52, 54% were on SNAP, 85% were basic skills deficient, 13% were dislocated worker, 31% qualified as youth, which just means under 24, 18 of 24, 2% were a veteran. Out of those 52, about 33 were black, 12 were whites, five were Hispanic, two were Asian, and the rest preferred not to answer. 90% of those continuing came from Champaign County, 8% from Iroquois, and not a lot of carryover from Douglas, Pi, or Ford. For degree type, 10% bachelor, 44% associate, 46% certificate. The bulk, again, was going into healthcare, 22 folks out of that 50 or so, three in the IT, nine in the business, 10 in the TDL, three in the manufacturing, three in construction, one in the law, one in the education. So we, through that application window, continue to serve folks who are low-income, low-skill, and going for training that is going to be in a leading and emerging industry. We feel like that was a successful application window. There are some funds left over because we got a larger allocation this year than we have in the past five years or so. So we're anticipating doing another application window in the fall for the spring semester, which we wouldn't usually do. I think that's it for the application window. Any questions about that?
Any questions? Thank you.
Yep, and then the second thing that I passed out was this business needs assessment form. You know, for the past year, we've been working with 10 to 15 different local entities, SBDC, library, Parkland, IDS, ES, DHS. Anyone in education or workforce development or economic development that was serving businesses. And we're having discussions about how do we think about each other when we're meeting with businesses? Meaning, instead of just going and saying, I have a program, use my program, another business does need something else. How do we think about each other and connect a business to those other resources instead of just letting the conversation stop? The idea was to have a business team, and we talked through as a group what that could look like. One of the ideas was to create an assessment form that everyone on this team would use when going to a business. And this is the draft of that form. You can see that we would try and capture basic information of the business, company name, et cetera. And then we would talk to them about workforce kind of specific needs, full-time staff, part-time staff, temporary staff, total staff, open positions. We would talk to them about challenges and opportunities with employment or job training. We would ask them to self-assess their labor force, job readiness, onboarding, retention, employment barriers, skills cap, or qualified applicants. And then thinking about the team, which is more than workforce, if you have like a chamber or SBDC or the red team. You're thinking about the workforce and the education services, sure, recruitment, training support, special populations. But then in considering the library, the SBDC, the red team, you're also in the chamber, you're thinking about business information, facility improvement, equipment purchase, trade assistance. Part of this was to jog the thinking of workforce developers and educators that are part of economic development and think about the space more holistically as an ecosystem that we're operating in. And then all these are supposed to over-time trigger in the thought processes of the people on the team. If a business says they're interested in recruitment, who do I make a referral to? If they say they're interested in a special population and you've talked that through, who do I contact on the business team? So this is an idea, a concept that's being talked through. I think it makes sense, it could work. They'll be up to the group to decide if they're going to use it. But we're trying to present a good idea, hopefully people buy into it. And that's it for my updates.
Any questions? Thank you for this report. Tyler.
Good morning, everyone. I'm James, further data technology division. The UKG ready timekeeping system is programmed to place parallel payroll processing. We're currently importing the time details for our staff into the systems to be able to test for those data. We should be able to begin the parallel testing in September. We are currently working with the early childhood division on the research for automatic certification systems and inventory tracking system. We are working with the DCD division on organizational updates to our staff wiki for the legacy grant projects. And we are, just completed the sidewalk data collection for this year's sidewalk updates for the Sidewalk Explorer ADA Accessibility Project. And we'll be presenting next month to the Coats Technical Committee with our analysis updates. The data tech is also continuing the migration of locally hosted applications to the AKS Cloud under the Coats Model this week grant. We expect to be finished by the end of September with that project. We are also working on the Equity Analysis Mapping Tool under the Housing and Transportation Index Grant Project for the Planning and Community Development Division. That is expected to be ready by October. And we are working with administration and the tech vendors on the rollout of Windows 11 to our company computers through the end of this year. And we are also working on a guidance document for RPC staff to instruct them in responsible use of generated AI within the workplace. And that's my updates. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Questions? Thank you very much, Tyler. Tammy.
I just have a couple of updates regarding our search for facilities. For the ICER program, we are still looking for someone to sublease a portion of the space for the property that we've identified on Bloomington Road. It's about 90,000 square feet and we only need about 60,000 of it. So we are looking for someone to sublease 30,000 square feet. We have identified an entity that is interested and they also like a long-term lease similar to us. So they are going to be touring that facility with our ICER team at the beginning of September. And then in regards to our administrative search, I had mentioned, I think last month, that we have identified a potential location in Champaign that we were having a fit analysis and needs assessment done on, I'm sorry, accessibility analysis and fit analysis done on. So the accessibility needs of that particular facility, as we anticipated, are going to require additional cost. So we are still, you know, taking that in consideration. Another facility that I know RPC had identified a couple of years ago, but it was tied up in legal proceedings, has recently come out of those proceedings. So that is a potential option that could be available to us now. And then we've been in discussions with Cunningham Township in the county regarding what the future plans for Brooklyn might look like and whether or not that's, you know, a viable option for us. And then also discussions with MTD about their development of space downtown Havana and whether co-locating with them would make sense. So several, you know, potential options. But right now, with the legislation having been approved, we are focusing on working with bond counsel to get our bylaws updated. As you know, we have created a bylaw committee. I expect that committee will be meeting pretty soon. I think today I will hear back from bond counsel about their recommendations for changes to our bylaws that will allow us to meet the IRS's instrumentality test so we can issue tax exempt debt. So that's our next step that we need to accomplish in the process.
How many square feet are you looking for for the administrative?
25 to 30,000.
60 for the training facility.
Yes.
But 25 for your administrative office?
Yes.
For now, it's 25.
Just better say 30.
All right, thank you, Tammy. So, all right, we'll move on. No other division reports. Is there a motion to accept and place on file the division updates?
Second, Michael.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? All right, Tlitzo.
I'll be very brief. Forgot to mention this at our last meeting. June 1st marked my seventh year here at RPC. And wanted just to take the opportunity to thank the commissioners for continuing to support and advocate for the RPC and for, you know, the team here that continues to work hard on behalf of the community as well as in serving the members of the Regional Planning Commission. I did share, I think at the last meeting, that I had the opportunity to go to the Lyndon Baines Johnson Presidential Library to provide some remarks regarding the War on Poverty. And what I didn't share, because I didn't know at the time, was I just returned last week from New York where I provided remarks at the United Nations on, well, global poverty, but the poverty work that we're doing here in America. And I was at that event at the invitation of the mayor of New York City, Mayor Eric Adams. And so it was such an honor to be there as CEO of the Regional Planning Commission, providing remarks at the United Nations, which is a place that I wanted to work at.
You can't leave.
You could say you did work there now.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. That all sounds pretty exciting. Congratulations. And we're thankful that you've been here. You're doing a great job.
Yeah.
All right. I see no older new business. Does anyone have anything to add to either one of those? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some of them.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.